Okay, it's now seven oh four, Tuesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. This is the meeting of the zoning board of the fields, Connor Corraces, sitting as his zoning board. I'll go to my right, to my left, Matt Watson, David Morris, Vice Chair, myself, Edith Pittick, Kelly Hickerson, our chair, zoning member, and please be very, a good friend, Michael. So, we have two related hearings tonight that are continuing. Both of which are concerning four eighty-eight building mode. And in board digits, other than the next meeting of, it will be on July twenty. A couple weeks ago was okay for people, anybody? This meeting, and it's, okay. So, the first hearing is in a field, held by Jim, Phil, Phil, myself, on behalf of the clients, the Wyndham's, neighbors of four eighty-four, Wilson Road, their hearing, the zoning inspector's influence of the zoning permit, of the foundation under the fourth placement, they unprepared that was fifteen years ago. So, the afterthought, the hearing, we then segue into my hearing filed by Jackie Davic of the government, Tom Tom Sasso, and construct the country's fourth, from, as I say, be very mean. So, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor of the Board, my name is Phil Mitchell, I represent the Wyndham who live at four eighty-two, Wilson Road, there a butter to, um, four eighty-three, Wilson Road. We have appealed the issuance of a zoning permit, um, that was issued, it's located at exhibit I of my submission, on this appeal, and the zoning permit was granted for, quote, "foundation under front porch placement, footing, front deck, and kitchen room." And that was, um, that was issued on March twenty-third, two thousand and one. Um, I would also just correct you that exhibit J, which is, um, zoning inspector Helen's, um, markups of plans that indicate the work area that was allowed and the work area that was not allowed, which is the reason for that, which is the zoning permit. Um, we, we addressed, um, and argued this appeal at some length in the hearing a week or two ago. Um, and I don't have a lot more to add, but I'm just gonna give you the summary of what our argument was and where, where I think, um, we should go on that, um, before we get to the special permit appeal. Um, so as I indicated last time, the zoning permit was issued, um, notwithstanding the fact that various decisions of this board, including but not limited to the decisions from early January of this year, um, and your two thousand and eighteen special permit, um, which indicated specifically that Mr. Sasso was required to return to this board to get further zoning relief for the relief that has now been granted under the zoning permit. Um, it's very, first of all, the zoning permit should not have been issued because of these various decisions that were made, specifically states that Mr. Sasso is required to come back to you. At those hearings in the fall of last year, even Mr. Sasso's attorney indicated that he intended to return to you all to seek zoning relief for all of these reasons. As you know from the many hearings we've had regarding this property, between June of, actually about a year ago, there was nothing on that property. And between now and then, there is a building that has been constructed that is completely different from the plans that you all approved. The building is built, there's so many problems with it, there are many variations from your decision. Your two thousand and eighteen special permit specifically indicated that anything other than minor variation from that plan will require to return to you, and they don't. And I know we've talked about this at nauseam at this point, but I just really wanna highlight, and in the special permit hearing, I'm gonna show you some pictures of that. Um, we won't have the benefit of Zoom, um, to screen share, but, um, but what's been done is various reasons, and it's a violation of your many, many orders. Um, if you look at Mr. Helen's, um, markup, I'll call it, of the zoning permit, showing exhibit J, it essentially shows that there's an allowed work area and there's a not allowed work area. And, yeah, sure, it's exhibit J to my, um, submission to you all.
Okay, sorry, I didn't think that.
Yeah, no worries. Um, so, so by virtue of this markup, Mr. Sasso, it's, it's a bit unclear, number one, what is actually allowed to do and what is not allowed to do. Um, but it does give him the right to work that he was explicitly required to return to you all. I'm looking for, yeah, which is, we're looking for, but it couldn't be allowed to do, and we did. So, the zoning permit should be reversed for all of these reasons, number one. And number two, this, this petition is already, um, I'll say complicated, but already has a whole host of issues, and can now separate this into a building permit that sort of come to you instead of the zoning inspector. And a separate special permit here further confuses a matter which is already, frankly, more confusing than it would be. Um, and for those reasons, and actually, I'll just add one, part of this fact, the construction that was allowed under the zoning permit, which is, A, already begun, but B, it, it, it violates zoning bylaws. And as I'm gonna highlight again in this special permit hearing, your zoning bylaws are there for a reason, they're there to follow, following them, such a precedent in this town. And moving forward, if we're allowing people to build buildings that were not permitted, it just, it defies the intent of the bylaws. And it is contrary to, I think, your goal in enforcing the bylaws and ensuring that there is some uniformity in town, and that everybody knows what the rules are, and they know that they need to follow them, and they know if they don't follow them, there are going to be consequences. Um.
Can you give us a question about what, uh, is not allowed or what, what violations the zoning permit allows?
So, well, that's, well, I think it's a little big, to be honest with you, but if you look at exhibit I, um, in the actual zoning permit, the zoning permit says "foundation under front porch placement," which we're gonna also talk about in the special permit hearing, because I think there's some ambiguity, um, as, as to what exactly they're requesting a special permit for. Um, "front deck and kitchen room." And if you look at, I believe it's exhibit K. It is exhibit K. Um, the crosshatches? So, exhibit K was a document that Mr. Carbonaro had put together over the course of our prior hearings in this matter, um, to show the distinction between the work that was permitted under the two thousand and eighteen special permit and the structure as it presented. So, if you look at that markup, um, you can see those differences. And then if you look at the zoning permit, we talked about the foundation, which is the part under the garage, which had originally been a small crawl space, the area where there were previously sonitu, and now is a full second, seven floor porch, um, and in the basement area. Uh, so I think that's what he's talking about, but frankly, it's a little unclear, because like I said, if you look at exhibit I, when there's a big circle for work area, no work area, I think there's some confusion, and I think that the special permit application is confusing for a number of reasons, but this is one of them. Which is why, yet another reason why, I think it's all mutual, actually, I think I know this all needs to be put into one, put into one application, which I believe was the initial intent. Um, because otherwise, I have the same question that you do. Um, it just confuses the matter. But in any event, the issuing of the zoning permit was in violation of the numerous orders of this board that required all of this to be rolled up into the special permit application, which came later on, and is now pending before you, and you're gonna hear it in a minute. Um, and so for all these reasons, I think if, if he wants to keep, um, a permit for this work, he needs to request that he receive a special, he would be part of the, this should be part of the special permit application. Or at least he has the whole package in one set of rules, um, instead of getting a, you know.
What, what, what is the zoning permit, what's foundation?
Well, it says "foundation, front porch," make a little better than, "kitchen room."
It says "foundation under front porch?"
Correct.
Foundation, floor.
Correct.
One deck, kitchen.
So, I.
So, what you're saying is that, that the zoning permit only would permit to the foundations under work areas, or it was a combination under the front porch?
Oh, that's a good question. Foundation under front porch. Thomas? I can't see this, Thomas. I don't know, because he, again, this is another reason for the confusion, because when you look at that, and then you look at the markup, and it has a big circle over that whole area, that, that, that makes me think it was broader.
This is a bird eye view down, and it's, that's all my experience there is. If it's on an elevation, it's a, it's a, a vertical picture down, so even, that is a, a allowed work area.
Well, but, and again, I think, I'd like to address this more in the special permit hearing, but the foundation, the part under the sonitu, if that's what we're allowing, originally there was sonitu, now there's a full basement, I'm gonna show you pictures of that, you've seen pictures of that, you've seen it before. And there's now a, a whole space in that, and it raises numerous issues about the average grade, it raises issues about the, the height, and et cetera, et cetera. So, and again, the two thousand and eighteen special permit specifically said, anything other than a minor modification, um, to the special permit, needs to return to you. And I don't see how, if you look at the original plan, and you look at, like, the, the present permit, it's markedly different in that area, it raises all sorts of issues with average grade, height, um, it was previously a crawl space that was allowed, and now it's a, it's a door, um, it's a door. And I can show you pictures of that too, and perhaps, you know.
Well, you're making some interesting claims, but I'd like to see that backed up, uh, with that. And, and don't forget, we also met, I think, February, a year ago, or something like that. Well, we got, yeah.
Yeah, we.
Daniel, yeah, Daniel White.
Daniel White, um, um.
Well, I think the instructions from the zoning inspector, I'm a little vague, but we're, uh, proceeding with our approved, the area. And there were some, yeah, yeah. But I think, like, uh. Is anything that they could do have a right to the people?
And another.
If, whether it's looking at, yeah. Okay, well, we're, well, we're already there, we're, we're. So, I think, I always thought that the, uh, foundation under, uh, in, in, one of the areas, carefully, we, we had approved, uh, I guess that's, that's what we wanted to drill down on, it's like, with all these plans there, it's, it's, that's what we're trying to grab, like. Do that foundation with. And the wind back, uh, on the structure itself. In fact, uh.
You all have the two thousand and seventeen, okay. Okay, so this is the problem with not, this is one of the benefits of Zoom, is that you have everything online and can screen share it. So, I would be happy to submit a copy, I have a copy of the approved plan, I only have one, so I'm not sure how helpful that's gonna be. I'd be happy to submit a copy of the approved plan in two thousand and seventeen after the hearing. Um, you can also look at exhibit K, which I, sorry, I put something around, of the...
Okay.
Correct, correct. So, if you look at K, this is, as I mentioned earlier, this is a plan that we had, that Mr. Carbonaro had marked up. The blue highlights, the changes from the two thousand and seventeen special permit. And I'd actually like to go to, um, let me think for a second, one of the plans that's been submitted as part of the special permit.
And this was the approved facade in the twenty seventeen special permit. Right? You have a copy of, what's out there. So, this. How many?
Eight four.
Yeah, eight three.
Three.
Yeah.
That's a new, still, um, sure, it should be part of that special permit.
You know, one of the things I just can probably not concentrate on, is, is, the applicant is maybe, um, a, maybe, uh, a, 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 a,[1329.16] In this drawing, topography dates back to two thousand nine. Apparently, I think, began around fourteen. But now we're talking about a special permit application in twenty one with altered grades and even proposed grades that aren't on the plan. So it's very difficult to understand topographically what's happening, what was there, what's going to be there, what's there today. We can, I guess, assume that the nine contours are accurate and we know what was there in two thousand nine. We don't know what was there in twenty twenty or twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. Because there's been substantial change around. We want to get into the setback to establish jurisdiction for the building appeal. So at the last hearing, uh, the applicant presented that they, they had a compiled, uh, setback there to the enclosed, to the unenclosed porch that wraps around this structure adjacent to them. They didn't average it with a thirty foot setback, so they originally had a seven and a half foot by right. So that was the original plans that were submitted. He was presented at the last hearing that they resurveyed it and they also acknowledged that on a corner lot, if you don't have anything within two hundred feet, you have to use the required a lot of setback thirty feet. Use an average of thirty on one side and whatever this is on that side. And that's now their by right setback. One of the comments we had this evening is, um, you're measuring to, Note Three specifically says that you're allowed to measure to the nearest dwelling or main building within two hundred feet. That no building in the east is by right. The question is, do you, is the board, i- is it going to be your direction that you would measure to an unenclosed porch, single story, uh, that is actually an allowable projection at certain sizes? Is that going to be your by right measurement for a full construction moving forward? Are you taking essentially an unenclosed porch at a setback at its nearest point? And that is now going to be your basis for, for this, basically? So that's, that's a discussion, I think, that the board, you know, we all would like to have. Well, I just go by what your law says, which is you measure to the nearest dwelling or main building. So you measure to the main building or the dwelling. And that, because that is now a main structure, so it's assumed that whether it's single story, multi-story, this happens to be a big story and a half. But it's not a single story unenclosed porch that you're now converting to a by right setback for you. Like, uh, I think that's, that's a bit of a leap. So whether or not the eighteen two, which just happens to clip their building, I'm sure they didn't intend to do that, but it, it does happen to exclude the majority of their facade in their building. So that would make all of this by right. Plus a substantial change, sorry, the windows are concerned when they came through a special permit hearing back in twenty seventeen for looking at an enlarged house and all of a sudden it just incrementally grows, the laws change, setbacks change, the structure changes, the grading is changing. And there's really no measurement baseline authority to really grab onto and say, well, what, where's the starting point? Or is it two thousand nine and now anything beyond that, we don't have to worry about? You can cut the grade down and create what's essentially a virtually much taller building. The average grade has been lowered and the roof has gone up. And those dormers now that are not being measured to as far as maximum building height in their application, they're measuring to the, the main roof. So this, there's a number of pieces here, um, to really understand.
So let me go back to my question to you a couple minutes ago. So what I do suggest is, the, the people in the back there, that, um, those are six foot.
I think it's measured to the main building.
Well, it actually.
We haven't, we haven't surveyed, is it? Do you like us to run a survey? It's probably twelve feet. It's about a six foot porch, it's probably double that. So it's going to push, going to bring the, that front yard setback into the building. But we, we just, you know, these plans were published last week and.
Would you argue the point that anything which, whether it's, uh, at eighteen or twenty three or twenty nineteen, anything outside the setback has a point to be made so long that.
Judge, so I think there needs to be some meaning to a special permit that's issued. So again, you still have the arguments that John just said, as you said, separately. When the special permit was issued, and if we're not using a special permit, if there's anything other than a minor modification, must return to the board to get a legal. And I don't think, this, this is not a minor modification of the one. And it didn't say anything that's inside or outside the setback, it said anything other than a minor modification. And when this structure again is presented in two thousand seventeen, the Wyndham saw the plans, they actually didn't come to the hearing because the house was what it was. And now the house is what it is, which is also, which is a completely different structure between the reconstruction, the original house, and that exasiation of the size of the, um, addition. And this is simply not minor. So in addition to the argument that it, it is potentially within the setback, it also, he also is required to come back to you all for anything other than minor. And this is just not minor. Again, if you look at, if you look at the two thousand seventeen approved plan and you look at this area of the basement and then you look at, and you look at that plan that's been presented to you and you look at this area of the garage. It's, I mean, I'm sorry that I have to do this in this clear weather, but it's completely, if you look at the garage, it is completely different. The grade is completely different, the measurements are all taken everywhere. So I think there's a real issue with somebody being allowed to just make a change when the special permit is set, set.
If you want to make a change, uh, in an area that has a right, how could we possibly deny that? If it has a right, it has a right. Now, I, I, I'm not conceding that none of this is in the setback, and that I do, that the setback would be, you know, on twenty, twenty eight or twenty one feet, not eighteen. But, you know, that's what we're probably going to, you know, in a matter of two or three years. My, my thing is, the building, for your feeling.
The whole house is done.
It was already done. So even if we go to building permit, the work is still there. If I stand and be friends, is what's there legally? And if the special permit application is, I think, is some of that. There's no special permit application, I think, which are the facts. But as far as we're concerned, anything that falls within our jurisdiction that hasn't been permitted, we're going to look at. If it's not before it's yet, we're going to require it. So it may turn out, if none of this stuff is within our jurisdiction, you can build anything that's required. Or it may turn out that a lot of this is within our jurisdiction, we will have to be careful. We're definitely not going to be able to do that. But the fact that the building permit was issued, the building was done, we're going to be hoping the building permit at this point doesn't compete anything. It's the analysis of whether or not special permits are maybe of a variance or maybe of whatever, I mean, we don't have to do it. So I'm kind of more focused on, on what, what comes next. And I think a lot of what you would discuss directly impacts what happens. But when you do it, I think, it's, it's hard to look together. To declare, how to stop the, the special permit. I mean, this is, it doesn't help us to, to argue that the building permit never should have been made. Because it was exactly, exactly finally, we were able to do it.
I understand. So at the hearings that happened last fall in winter, um, I believe that the board has indicated that he could go ahead with everything that was allowed as a right and any weather for things. And so now the house is what it is. So it's my argument that this additional work that is pushing the building permit, where he now has gotten a building permit and can go do whatever he does, which he's been working that area, he's gotten a building permit, um, shouldn't be done. It shouldn't be done until he obtained such a permit.
Are you conceding that the work that he's done, fall down to the building permit?
I'm not conceding anything, to be honest with you.
That's my question. Has it been worked done in a, in a work allowed area that wasn't covered by the building?
Well, I guess it depends on how you interpret the building permit, but he's done work in that whole garage area. The whole garage area, the driveway, he has done work. So to the extent that, something that is not covered by the building, and he has violated your prior order.
Let me get to my question. What is it that he's done that violates the building?
Well, he's done work in that whole, he's done work in this garage area. I can, I can show you pictures. I, there was a question.
I guess, uh, in new state, I think, it's kind of summary of what, you know, that, uh, the last permit about the permits.
And when you, you, the firm, just so I'm clear, that he's done work in this area, which is, you know, that is, he's done work in the setback, inside the setback, or, or not? I mean, or are you claiming that he's done work in an area that's as a right? I don't think that's. So the, the area of, of speaking to Jones, you're referring back to the original special permit, but established the front yard setback. Not, we can't, that, this was filed before that was ever incorporated.
And given what we knew and what was presented like three or four years ago now, um, he thought that, um, much of this wasn't back into setback. The applicant told me a month or so, or less, and then, which I think is his valid point on Note Three, that, uh, they are always involved to act, which means a lot of, not all, but fair monitoring the, uh, post-construction or actual construction outside the by right. I'm still concerned, I'm concerned with what's in the setback. And is that, was that covered, I mean, did the building permit, or not, or did the, did the building permit, I mean, go, go down to the hill? But, um, you know, just, they admit a lot of line standards, but you have to tend to whip it, you can't say the bylaw is wrong. If it's not presented to us, it, it happened when we were, combined, we made a decision back in twenty eighteen.
Yes, and now it gets to, well, where does the clock begin as far as measurement of the structure? Not just horizontally or vertically? Where, where do we go from there? In two thousand nine, I guess, when we reestablished an average grade, were we measuring to? Well, you have a, have a height concern, um, but we have a site, we have a grade concern, there's this sort of difference. Want to get into that? How they're measuring grades? Right on their, say that the grades take up to two thousand nine and they took spot grades around the building and divided by the number of grades and that would be average grades. That doesn't really weight the length of what the grade is typically. And even on their plans, on their architectural plans, they actually lay out a weighted average grade.
So, so your contention, maybe that, um, your methodology of reading, is that, is that, um, illegal in terms of height?
Don't know. But I, I don't know what, what the grade is really. We don't see where are the average grades that you're using? And how does that relate to the actual plane that you're measuring? Particularly, you walk yourself around the building, the definition is the average grade within ten feet of the building.
Yeah.
So you get an average grade, elevation times length, elevation times length, all the way around, and then you divide by the perimeter of the structure when I travel. But that's actually what they did on, I'm not sure. They actually do that on sheet A six, where they walk through, this, I have an issue with this grade, I'm not sure why they have an average grade on one side, maybe this kind of dates back to when they were taking sort of a localized grade, if you recall, in this corner. And that was determined that we had to use a whole house grade. But this methodology, my point is, is a lot different than this methodology. Which one is correct?
That's one question. Well, if it takes, uh, you did too, that method A is correct and method B is not.
Well, first of all, it's, it's one of the board's jurisdiction, whether or not that's your principle. But generally speaking, with the professional practice that you would use the methodology that's shown on the architectural plan as far as measurement around the building. This needs more detail and we need to come to a conclusion as to when, how are we measuring the grade? Is it two thousand nine or is it twenty twenty one for a special permit? They submitted in twenty twenty one. These are just questions that moving forward.
Well, you know, I guess, you need pre-construction grade, so it would suggest if I was in nine or twenty fourteen, something like that.
So pre-construction of, of what? A permit was filed, but cannot build the garage under, cannot do any of this. This has all changed dramatically. So is it used pre-construction from?
It looks like a contamination, there's an impact of change.
And you're lowering the grade and creating a taller structure.
So they may be, it would be a concern if we, if I can, I'd say, with the size of the pavement, if we were going from a thirty meter setback to twenty five feet.
Right.
It's, it's irrelevant.
So it's, it's unclear because all the height is being measured. So one, one question is, is it, is the grade accurate? Is it low enough to reflect what's around the building? Secondly, is height being measured accurately? Is it to the highest dormer?
The bylaw might have been, you guys, you remember, um, twenty, what, twenty two? Twenty two, pardon my bad, but, uh. There was, there was mess in the dormers and I think this was, uh, fifty by right, I think, but not by right.
Fifty note, fifty note taken at the end of the, uh, header area.
The dormers left, I don't see it. So in a slow word, height is measured from the ridge point of the roof surface. And makes the plan, so the gap to distance from the bank line, the ridge line, making up the other surface of the roof corner. And the ridge line may not be higher than five feet of everything, okay? Um, it doesn't deal with dormers, it, it does deal with projections of five percent of, uh, on top of that, things, things like that. There used to be specific minimums, but that was removed, I don't know. There are many, there are many, but, so making space, you have a grade here, you know, the grade height here. And then, if you, if you use the grade that's here instead, when you're reading the height, is it visible height nine?
Well, the, the existing, no, the building was built, you know, buildings.
I know, but, if they're calculating, okay, they're calculating it from the grade that's here. And this is thirty five feet here.
Yeah.
If instead we use the grades down here, is it just more height, is that way lower?
No. If you, right now, the average grade is shown essentially running through the roof of the existing garage. And that's, that's their average grade. So they measure from that up thirty five feet is the maximum height. If you, if your average grade, because of grades around the building that are actually lower, brings that lower, now you make, when you measure up to thirty five feet, you're going to hit it before you would have hit it if you were up here. The opposite, especially with an existing building. And the fact that the roof has grown. Again, I don't have measurements to say this is a great roof, but it's unclear, the methodologies.
How could we feel?
Ask for an existing, what, an existing conditions plan that measures an average grade around the existing building, that would be a start.
And existing, you mean present, as opposed to the two thousand nine?
They just understand what, you know, again, what, what, what's the starting point for a special permit?
The point is, since the average grade moved.
Yes. Or is it lower than what's been published?
Yeah, only not the first.
And do you measure to the top of the dormers? Do you measure to the midpoint of the, of the roof?
The way the bylaw is written today, you'd measure the ridge point of the main roof up there. And with this, I thought as the, the dormer, when I've moved up to the building.
Um, so you can put a shed dormer across the house, but it's not bad.
If I could just make, sorry, if I could just make one comment, um, so the, my opinion is that we shouldn't look at two thousand and nine in determining the average grade. There is no question at all that the average grade has changed. I have pictures I can show you. There's been so much work done in that full area of the property to lower the grade. And it just wouldn't be logical or make sense if we're using a grade twelve years ago, when the grade has clearly been changed when this addition was built and the house was constructed. Um, there's, there's so much digging going on, I have this, uh, there's some jackhammering going on before anything was built. The grade has clearly been lowered. And frankly, the house is just visually, so I'm not an engineer, clearly, but visually, that, that house looks so much taller.
I support the grade lower, that would support an argument that's saying the, uh, the building is tall, measured from post-construction grade, or today's grade, or something like that.
Well, or pre-construction grade, because it was, the grade was, it was, or construction. So before anything went up, the grade is changed.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's clearly changed, there's, there's no question, um, that the grade was changed. And so I would say it's not a post-construction grade, it's pre-construction grade. We shouldn't be looking at the two thousand and nine grade, we shouldn't be looking at the two thousand and fourteen grade. We should be looking at the grade a year ago, when he started to clear out this property, this, this structure, because it makes a huge difference. And if you don't, if you don't look at that, there's.
Could I ask you, because I'm, it, it's, what you're saying is, you know, graded to grade and, um, you're able to go up thirty five feet. And they're saying prior to construction, they lowered, artificially lowered the grade, say five feet, and then built a forty foot structure, but because they used the, the pre, uh, 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 pre-leveling or, or pre-grade reduction, they'll say, well, from, from up here, the pre-construction grade is only thirty five, even though after they dug a hole five feet deep and come and lower the grade, they went up four.
Correct.
That essentially.
That's nonsense.
Okay.
Correct. And they did this after they fortified that. Correct. And I, I think.
When the house is demolished and then they give the, they give grade it because they were giving it, they were giving.
May I, I have, um, I think copies for all of you are just a couple, three pictures that, or two pictures that, actually, I don't think it's single, I don't think they're, you know, that just sort of appear, I'm just, may I distribute or down to three or four? One, two, three, four, five, six, one, two. That's, that's a fair point. Does everybody, yeah, does everybody?
I wanted two.
Yeah, it's just two people. So there's, does everybody have one?
Yeah.
The challenge, like, one of the reasons why I appreciate it's the, you were just pulling out, but I was trying to make copies, um, quickly, once I found out that we were going to be live. So, so this, these two pictures show you, um, what, um, sort of just a, a part of what the property looked like, um, in the process of, you know, demolishing what was there and regrading this area, um, before anything went up. And these pictures were taken approximately a year ago. So it was sometime, you know, right around the time of the building permit filing in June of twenty twenty. Um, and so you can see, just send these two pictures. Um, and I think somebody in there is jackhammering, I have a video, but I couldn't show it tonight, um, that the grade is really being sort of worked on and messed with. Um, it, it's hard to come to a conclusion that's not, these are some of the pictures.
Wouldn't it be kind of easy just to take the grade as it was today and then go up to the, the ridge point of the main roof and go up to the roof? And, and, you know, get those, you know, and figure out exactly how, how tall the building is from the way it's graded?
I think it'll be helpful to get these two pictures. I think we got, we're lacking that right now, we're using two thousand and nine grades. But if you look at the plan, um, that was submitted with the application, um, there are various notes on the plan that highlight the two thousand and nine grades. But if you look at the plan, um, that was submitted with the application, um, there are various notes in the plan that highlights the two thousand and nine grades. Uh, and also highlights that the grading shouldn't change once construction starts, so.
Whether or not it's too high or high enough or too, you know, low, it, it does factor into a special permit proceeding. It's, uh, what was there and how much more is there? Just don't know. The windows came through a hearing twenty years ago, the plan had those much less invasive amounts of change.
And I think the reality is the plans, uh, we shouldn't be working off a calculation sign ourselves for that.
You make a good point that we could, uh, certainly ask for, um, elevations, correct?
Correct.
Now, if it's not, if it's, if it's an elevation of the intersection, both of them eighteen two, or what I see, I see. But it's definitely. If it's something that's outside, that it's set back twenty two, twenty fifteen, assuming you buy the, uh, capital basis.
And I think when you, you make this analysis from a special permit proceeding, as I know we're not quite there yet, when you're evaluating what the impact is and whether there's any potential that's a missed impact. You need to correct, you need to know what numbers you're looking at and what the grades are and what all these other calculations are. If you don't know what those calculations are, how are you making a, a?
Okay, so you have a concern about that.
Correct.
And I, I, I value your concern. Not proving that, but I, I can see that I'm making a big mistake. I'll be in the fact that not the setback, but, but, uh, the plan itself of all this. You have, you have a problem with the building permit, that the building permit, you know, it's a little bit. So I'm, so we go or cannot provide.
Well, so I think that though, that's the kind of deal I'll dealt with in the various, the, the decisions. And your decisions were that, um, Richard Dassel had to stay within, you know, for the, the original reconstruction. Or within the scope of what you, you, the special permission. So, so it requires that building permit didn't allow him to do anything beyond what had been permitted, what either was permitted as a right with the original reconstruction. Or what was permitted under the special permit. So that's what the special permit proceeding was aimed to, right? So while that decision, I don't disagree with the fact that he needed to stay within the confines of the two thousand and eighteen special permit or what's allowed as a right. But as we know, the manner in which the structure was built and the way it sits today falls outside the scope of that in a number of, what was the, the height of the roof in the original structure? Uh, the second story porch, we're changing the furniture, the foundation that we just discussed, the front porch, um, on Linden Drive. There's also an imperative that's into the special permit portion of the, the evening, but, um, part of the porch is now enclosed that was ever requested. Um, in the back of the house, where there's that quote-unquote bump out, there's a concrete pad that it appears that he may be requesting to back up to prove his part of his special permit. That concrete, which he originally was gonna construct something and then he, you know, wanted to.
I thought it was just a pad, it was part of the building.
Well, so the pad, the pad is actually an important issue. That pad in the back of the house, and I can show you plans, I can show you pictures, that pad has never been allowed by anyone. That pad is, was at some point in time, after two thousand thirteen or fourteen, put onto the property. And that's what Richard Dassel tried to then build that bump out. But that's not allowed, and, and I wanna make it clear that this board shouldn't allow that pad as part of the special permit so that then six months down the road, a year down the road, something wants to know that. Because there, there is no plan that was approved that ever allowed that pad. And I have photographs, which I can show you now, or I can show you when it's coming here, of the original house. There is no pad there. So when that pad appears, I don't know, but it certainly seems to be a lot of.
I think it's a little bit more than a pad, it's a foundation wall, three, four. But I, I think, again, because things have changed, setbacks, PR designation and so forth, I think, um, some people come in. This is my aside. Side, side. But I think they thought they benefited from a. Left it on their architectural plans, fifteen foot setback. That, that's not something that's, uh, afforded to a rear guard.
Right, right.
So I think that could be, but, so the point is, it's not part of any special permit request, should be able to, that's.
Okay, but the, the whole special permit thing, we made it separate. Why you're, you're not. When you're trying to stab the, what's your, what's your, uh? Because, because it's, because it's a solid foundation, uh, please don't push the sun.
Correct.
Again, I think. Okay, so what's the remedy?
I think the setback is a big issue, which then we still don't agree with at any point, so whatever, for the reasons that John mentioned, the step measurements and dwellings. Um, and also the fact that it was supposed to come back to the board of the special permit, just because, if, if you guys, just because. So if it's supposed to be a special permit proceeding, it's supposed to be a, a special permit proceeding. It doesn't mean that even if it's built already, that it can, you can speak out within the building permit proceeding. The thing about the building permit is that it gave him the right to do work in that area. And in fact, he did and had done work in that area after his building permit issuance. Whereas for the other areas that he did a dispute special permit approval, there's a reason that this order is, but he's not allowed to do the work. So that's, that's a problem. I don't know what else he's gonna do. And that took the last year, like, a week, a week or two ago, um, more work was done. There was a garage door put in, so that building permit has ramifications, i.e. he will do work. And if there is the potential that this is problematic and it's within that setback, whatever that, the, the measurement is. Then that work shouldn't be allowed if it's a dispute special order. So I think the proper place for that request is to, for a special permit and not to have building permit. He shouldn't be allowed to do work in that area at this point until it comes before the board of the special permit. The best place, frankly, for that to have been is part, well, that is part of the special permit proceeding. And I think there were so many days in this whole last year and a half, this could have been made so much simpler. But it's not, it is what it is, right? So he should be required to come back on that portion, I think, my, my position, to the board and request a special permit. Just like all the other ones, because right now, who knows what he's gonna do in that area? You saw exhibit I or whichever exhibit it was, where Mr. Howell encircled, worked there or not worked there, he's going for it. I mean, he was going for it when, when it wasn't allowed, but now that it's allowed, there's digging, there's building, there's work being done. And I just think it's inappropriate, given the liberties that have been taken over the past year and a half by this applicant, with respect to the structure. If you, if you give an inch, it's gonna take a mile. And it's just at this point, frankly, looking at this structure, looking at the portions that have not been properly permitted, you can't give an inch. You got, you gotta come back and get the right commission. And if, if it's legitimate and he's allowed as a right, then you know what? He'll make that argument and you all, you all are extremely confident, you'll make that decision. But it's not in the right place now. It never should have been where it was in the first place. And that's the problem I have, it's a problem with progress. There's been a huge issue with progress here.
Let me focus on what practically happens. If we did not.
If he, that, from my view, he wouldn't then be. Okay, he would not need to seek a special permit, because he's gotten a, he's got a building permit, there's work to be permitted. So he would have the right to do that. So I could then go and file a forty year appeal of, uh, the, of your decision of holding the issuance of the building permit. And I would be off and running on an appeal in land court or superior court on a building permit issuance. Which is separate and apart from a special permit.
So, so you, you think the building permit would be for the issue of the, of the, of the.
Well, it does to the disease, I mean, it does sound, there's the issue with whether the common is there or not, number one. And number two, there's a circle of uncertainty, which is very broad, so it could, it could well be.
Okay, so if we agree with you, can you, can you go through?
Well, then Mr. Dassel would, number one, have the right to go file an appeal of your reversal. Uh, and number, but number two, I would hope that Mr. Dassel would then file an application for a special permit or amend the one that is presently before you to add this book and it isn't before you. Um, and then it was planned in that form, as opposed to multiple forms and multiple tracks. So I think, again, I think at this point, one goal is simple protection. And I think it just confuses the matter that we have these two different building permits, special permit ongoing at the same time. And it really falls under, we're talking about the same structure. Totally. I completely, I, I completely, completely agree with that. And I think it's been looked at as these two separate, you got the addition, you got the reconstruction, but it's a new house, it's a totally new concept. It's, it wasn't how it was back in two thousand and eighteen while it was a special, but this is new.
I'm trying to ask, so we, we're at fifty days in the humming days. So we're beginning to, I think it'll be, I'm gonna have to, probably, uh, extensions, uh, to file our, uh, decision. I'm not sure if you can, I think you have to, I don't know when you wanna do that after special permit. If you wanna, I have a deliberation on the event, so if you choose you're gonna deliberate, I need to close now, deliberate if I'm gonna, or if you can, you're gonna, I'm gonna put it in the press. It's a deliberation from the.
Let me just, let me like thirty seconds, just like.
You're welcome.
Okay, just for the record.
Uh, for the record, sure, Jeff Delisi with Ormberger, Delisi and Harris. I'm here with, uh, Ryan Stasco, my client.
Contact the board of improvement.
Um. Okay, on the issue of average setback. Um. The definition, uh, note three behind the, uh, table of area regulations in section five, um, refers to dwellings or main buildings. And the word dwelling is not defined in the zoning bylaw, but the word building is defined. And the definition of building. Is any structure or portion thereof, either temporary or permanent, having a roof or other covering, forming a structure. And that then includes tents or vehicles located on private property for shelter of persons, animals or property of any kind. So when we're talking about the building at two Linden Drive as whether we're going to count the covered porch in the setback, the calculation of the setback from Linden Drive. The answer's found in your bylaw. Um, and I'm sure investigation of many plans that were filed, uh, in this, uh, in this town would, would show that that's very consistent. So we stand by our definition of average setback and our calculation of average setback. And, um, when that calculation is applied to this property along Linden Drive. The areas other than a portion of the height of the roof all meet that setback definition. Nothing is constructed within it. No, uh, front porch, no foundation, no pergola, no dormers. And so, um, our contention is that, not contention, but, but John. I, I'd like to actually step back and, is after the issuance of the January twenty twenty decision. Um, naturally, one of my first things that I did was contact John Howard. And I needed to understand from John, what can we do and what can't we do? And John said, I'm gonna send you a letter that's gonna define what you can do and what can't do. And that was the letter that was presented, uh, at the last meeting. We then worked with John, um, to try to have him tell us what, within his letter, is work that was either not allowed as a right. Or not permitted pursuant to the two thousand and eighteen special permit. And we had multiple meetings with him. And his intention was, he told us to apply for a building permit. He told us what he believes we could do legally and what we can't do legally. And that's exactly what we did. We, we, we went over the plan script before we filed the building permit and he conferred. And that's how the building permit was issued. And that's how the building permit was issued. And this kind of goes to this underbelly of, of an argument that has been made that, that somehow, um, you know, this is something that, uh, you know, things have changed and it's wrong and, things have changed, um, but, but not because, not because we didn't contact the building inspector, talk to the building inspector. And that even goes back into 2019 when the building permit was issued. It is, is, Ryan had discussions with Bob Egan about covering the pergola area. Ryan had conversations with Bob about the foundation and new of the Sanos group. And Bob gave his opinion to Ryan, which formulated the plans that were filed with the building permit application. He didn't ask us to come back, didn't say that it was a, um, uh, was not minor insignificant. And in, in retrospect, yeah, we should have, but we're also entitled to derive on our dealings with the building inspector and the issuance of permits. So, um, those were in the building permit, and it was not until the request for zoning enforcement was made months after the building permit was issued, that this matter was addressed or brought to the attention of Bob, at which point he reversed himself in July of last year. So just to kind of set the record on that, um, as to average grade, um, the average grade, and Brian is going to talk about it because I wasn't there, but was a discussed and decided upon topic in the special permit, which became final after no appeals were taken. And the average grade is set pursuant to what occurred in that hearing, what is shown on that plan, and that's the average grade that we've utilized this entire time. Um, can I ask Ryan to explain what, what occurred on average grade?
What we need to get to, I know you've been talking on the 2009 field survey, you know, and this is something you guys brought up, you know, when I was here in front of you in both hearings. And, um, with regards to the 2009, I actually offered to redo it, but I asked, you know, the board, um, because I had received, um, you know, like a special permit for the garage, and I had to basically excavate material away from, um, basically the building and everything before the foundation for the garage, that I had not brought that material back, you know, to where it was originally. And, um, Mr. Chittick, uh, was pretty adamant that no material should be brought back onto the site. And Mr. Morris and Mr. Egan also agreed, and it was decided by the board that instead they would read the 2009 field survey instead of me bringing the material back on. And so I, I went through the notes and everything because I know we, you know, we've discussed multiple times, you know, and that's why we ended up using the 2009 field survey was, you know, uh, you know, about bringing material back on since then. But the issue here that's actually really staring us in the face is, assuming the board agrees with the average setback calculation and the fact that anything not within the setback, behind that average setback line, uh, is jurisdictional, what we're dealing with is potentially a roof, non-conformity having been created if you accept, um, Mr. Lindon's counsel's argument, um, and whether that is substantially more detrimental or not. Um, the alternative is, um, a situation that I discussed with John Howland, and that is take the areas that are arguably non, where a non-conformity was arguably created and remove that. So it's to bring it into compliance and outside of the jurisdiction of the board. And the way to do that, if that were the case, would be to create a flat roof situation in portions of the house. And I, um, submitted the alternative rendering on that in my special permit application package, which would have a widow's walk on the top. And that situation, I think, is probably a worse scenario for purposes of the argument of whether a, um, privacy issue might be implicated as a result of something tearing down into a yard. So that is basically kind of the remedy that we're left with if the board were to, um, agree that the average, that the average grade is somehow changed and therefore that, um, we're creating something that is substantially more detrimental for the neighborhood and needs to be removed. So, um, that's my comment on the average grade. As to the pad, um, the pad, uh, was installed, uh, basically was utilized as a patio. It was shown on your plan from 2018. Ryan's discussion with Bob Egan, which resulted in a building permit plan to build upon that pad and create a, uh, create a bump out addition that would extend to 15 feet off and no higher than 15 feet in height, that was something that was in your, in Ryan's building permit plan, building permit was issued, it was contested last year. It was clear to me that we had an issue with the calculation of side yard because of the corner lot question, and we conferred and we decided that it's wrong for us to build that, and therefore we've removed it from our special permit plan. But the pad, I don't see any reason why the pad should be removed. It could still be used as a patio again. So, put a grill on it or whatever. So that's, um, sum and substance what I have to say about the building permit appeal. Um, I think that John was very careful and measured to try to honor the decisions of this board in 2020, and also be fair as to, to tell Ryan what work could proceed as a right and what couldn't proceed as a right. And that's, that, that's what he intended to do and asked us to require to file for a building permit. So.
Um, let me see. It's like 15.7 feet from the southerly side yard, which is the property of Two Linden Drive, and 15.6 feet from the, um, wait, no, this is wrong. I'm sorry. I called, I called, um, Two Linden Drive southerly side yard. That's the rear yard.
Wouldn't that qualify as a portion of the main building, less than 15 feet in height, may extend up to 15 feet?
But is it a building? We just went through the definition of building that has to be covered, right?
It's a structure.
Yeah.
It's a deck. Yeah, I would think a building is more, it's a structure, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. A length, okay, so it's not a, I mean, 14 feet.
The rear yard on Two Linden Drive, Two Linden Drive is a rear yard because it's opposite of Jerusalem Road, which is the person front yard in order to create a rear yard, which is what your bylaw requires. The Wyndham, and I misspoke when I just said that, the Wyndham's yard, which is over here, that is the side yard. So. So, um, let's set a little context here. Um, in your special permit decision, um, both this and this are referred to the side yards. Okay? Um, when we conceived of this little bump out addition, the area of the pad, the discussion with Bob was, could we use that to build upon? And Bob said, well, sure, because you're 15 feet off and 15 feet off, and you can do it. So that's how it got into the plan. When we appeared before the board last year on the request for zoning enforcement, John raised the point, for the sake of consistency, that, and under the language of the bylaw, which on my reading actually then became clear, that you need to have a rear yard in a corner lot situation. Some towns call it two side yards. This town calls it a rear yard and a side yard. But at the hearing, it was discussed that since we have fronted on Jerusalem and Linden, we get to choose which is the rear, this or this. And our address is Jerusalem, and we've chosen Jerusalem. That matter was discussed, and I think the board kind of reached a consensus that we could do that. And therefore, this is the rear, and this is the side. Um, I'm not clear as to why, but if the board thinks we need a special, well, how, how so?
The rear, the rear yard setback.
This, this here showed on your 2018 plan and still is, is on this plan. So this little bump out, which is not crosshatched on your plan, um, that is, is part of the special permit plan.
The whole rear of the building is in the 30th setback, right?
The 30, the setback line is here.
Yeah, yeah, right.
This portion of the building.
What existed and what didn't, the water, where are in the setback, right?
Yes.
But if they exist, they're not in form.
But, but that pad was existing, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Is the existing setback one?
Uh, as of, I mean, it, it.
It doesn't pre-exist if that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it doesn't pre-exist. So if you think. If that, if you think you have to amend the special permit applications include that, do you consider, I mean, I guess, I guess what we're sort of discussing though is that you need a special permit for, for a deck?
A special permit for a structure.
Do you consider a, a pad a structure? I thought, I thought a structure was.
Not a building.
It's not a building, but it's a structure.
A structure is basically any combination of materials.
If you're doing a deck, you need a building.
Yeah. At a fixed location, you can do that.
Well, if it's non-conform, yes, but I mean.
Okay, so, so, so you need a deck, you need a special permit.
Right, considering.
Yeah, if it's in the setback, you, okay, I, I, you know, I mean, I think that, that patio is basically been there since, I think before I bought the house. So, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, so.
It's a matter of.
Yeah, we'll be happy to modify the special permit application. The, the key point here is that we're not building on it, um.
Yeah, we haven't heard that special permit setback.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll apologize because obviously I'm the door, so I was like, I'm already stuck. I'm, I'm trying to.
So what?
Uh, I, I, I guess the lady had said some stuff that helped me at least a couple minutes. It just started off, got some permits for renos, and then next thing you know, house is torn down and it's been built and stuff, right?
Yeah, but, but there was a permit to tear the house down and rebuild as well.
Mm-hmm. And, and, but then you talked about Bob issuing some permit and then he rescinded stuff and then.
Yeah, I didn't.
Then you went on to John, who gave you a permit too. So.
Yeah.
How's the interplay between what, what happened with Bob and whatever the rescinding meant and, and now, uh, you know, the, the second go around with John?
You know, I wanted to, I, I, I raised the issue of Bob because I wanted to get context to the insinuation that we're somehow just completely just ignoring town halls and building what we want to build. Okay? Um, and so I went back to Bob to explain genesis as to how we got from special permit to the building permit plan since 2019. And, well, basically those, which included the foundation, the, the front dormer, recovered, um, pergola area, which we considered a structure, by the way, at, at the time in, in 2018. Um, but it really almost doesn't matter for purposes of construing the appeal of the building permit application. Because John Howland issued a permit for very specific items in his permit, and that's what that applies to. Um, and John was here and he explained why he did that at the last meeting. And the new information in 2021 is the, is the average setback revelation that applies in this circumstance. So when you look at that and you measure 18.2 feet from Linden Drive, no portion of the building which John issued his building permit for in this year is within that setback. None of it.
So everything on John's building permit detail, if you have, has a right?
Absolutely, under section 8.7a. Yep.
And so the, is there a, some other construction that was under Bob's building permit that is being skewed right now? Or is whatever, is whatever, the building permit that Bob issued, that's, uh, more of a break?
You, you guys basically said that was not a minor and insignificant change, that needs to be addressed, even though Bob issued that permit. Even though Bob issued that permit, he has the right to rescind that permit. He did. I'm denying Ryan's appeal and upholding Mr. Wyndham's appeal. And, oh, by the way, you can't do any work that's other than air tightening the building, anything that you're allowed to do pursuant to the special permit, anything you're allowed to do pursuant to the reconstruction of the house under section eight point nine. Which is, rebuild the house in its vertical plane and not create any new non-conformity.
Would you, uh, John, do you, uh, go, come back and I actually missed it. You made your, your point on the special permit, or the order, so.
Um, no, I didn't even cut you off. On the, on the special permit? You didn't cut me off. I stopped calling you. No, I, 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 I think I, I, I'd like to know whether a flat roof situation is something that is acceptable. But I know I can't compel that response. But it sure would be helpful to know. But otherwise, I don't have anything further to add. Yeah. So when you're looking at, um, when you're looking at the height issue, if you're, um... The blue area, so the yellow, yellow area is the existing portion of the existing building, which is non-conforming. Legally deemed as a non-conforming. Okay? The area is the area that's in addition to what we could build as a right.
But that's a two and a half or something.
That's the proposed, you know, yeah, yeah. So that's the difference there. And looking at it from the other elevation, it's the Wyndham side yard here. And then a portion of this rate, I think we call it, over here. The calculations, and I, I'm going to get into this in the next meeting, but I think it is relevant for purposes since the height issue was raised. The calculations have the increase in the non-conforming, in the volume and, um, the thought area, in the non-conforming area, as being about three percent. Other areas in the town, just by way of reference, I've seen the one hundred and ninety percent increase, which are perfectly acceptable, uh, under section eight point seven D. The alternate, i- in, in the circumstances that I saw. Yeah. So the, um... He applied for a building permit for the flat roof alternative. John sent us a letter dated April tenth and said that, um, the concerns concerning large home review, height, attic feeling change, rear yard setback, rear addition have all been satisfied in the plan. Building permit can be issued, but he would like us to appear before you before he issues it. The plan to give you a sense, you can pass it along. I don't have an extra copy, but it's in your packet through the special permit. No, that's Ryan Semidol, it would be the Semidol prior for May. And to be clear, we don't desire to do that. But if, if, if we're told that it is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, then we've had to look into the alternative of what we could do.
Now, would you like to take your... It was not for human habitation, if I assume. On a flat roof, height is measured from the top of the parapet to the bottom of the main, each surface that's always higher. The, um, limitations are just caused, are not applied to the deck, and it's not used for human habitation. Which in the aggregate, it cannot exceed five percent. But actually, that's a railing that's not, uh, used for human habitation.
So where railing is actually used? In the, as if you go on. What's the definition of human habitation? Sleeping, eating, cooking, bathroom?
Well, I mean, it's cited as a, the example of what is not included, or is relevant, is the railing. Timneys. And that is, hoopers. But the railing doesn't, doesn't count, if that's all it is. It's got a uport, right, or something. Yeah. Not, not the human habitation. You know, even if they were, it's not, it's not human habi-, you know, I, I think human habitation means some sort of living floor. That's what you're referring to. No, we, no, that's not right. If it's more than five percent. If it's less than five percent, you're able to be having a rail, that's what. That's your... I agree with that, with your, uh, definition. All the deck and sixty square, but it's not human habitation. It's less than five percent of the roof. More than five percent of the roof.
If you want to cover it, that's another bargain.
Yeah.
Even if it's...
Right, we would add railings, timneys, and everything else together. Exactly the key, it talks about, you know... Well, I'm trying to read, read, read the, the wording in the bylaw. The wording in the bylaw, uh, loops timneys, and, and it talks about, without limitation, as examples, timneys and timneys, railings and hoopers. Those are not for human habitation. The opposite thing here is the five percent. Okay, well...
I just might ask, uh, for those plans back, because I'm only copy.
Well, we haven't decided. Is it going to continue, whether, whether we close it and then, and then deliberate, continue it for next, in two weeks' time? Is this going to make sense? Let us see what... You'd be surrendering anything regarding height?
I'm going through this here, we're not going to get any more. Correct.
No, no. Stop me before I, I go again.
I'm sure the opposite would be happening to you.
Until, uh, July fourteen eleven.
We're going to keep it open now? For...
I don't want to be under a fourteen day...
Unless there's an agreement to the contrary.
But I would say, if you're going to request to continue it, if you're going to close it at the next meeting, or if you're going to need an extension to leave July. So we are... We're going, yeah. So right now, I want to make a, um, a claim of my support, I believe we have sixty days, because we filed on the fifteenth of April. So I add up the days, we have fifty days, we're going to go another thirty, so we're at ninety. So that I feel comfortable and we're feel comfortable, I think that we want to miss any final action that's taken by November, then July, thirty. And that's the decision, that's the final action order. We've done it before, we've done it. I have a letter from the, the, my, this is a not letter. So you can keep it open, with the understanding that you're willing to close it at the next meeting and deliberate and file it. This is just a start.
I guess I'm just concerned about new information being submitted a week before the next meeting, which requires us to then take time and respond to. It's that type of circular thing that I'm concerned with? Because I would think it would be just as easy to close the hearing and at the, um, consent of the applicant, to give yourself some more time to deliberate, so that you could deliberate, take your final act and fi- file your decision at the same time that you do the special permit. It seems, that would, to me, would seem to be the way to go, and I would suggest the board might consider that.
And I'll counter, and just say, my only concern is that when we close it, that's, that's my concern, and I don't know of any I'm sure that, and I, I'm sure they have different reasons and everything, but without our counsel, our initial counsel being accepted, so to, but I just want us to be in a pickle. Whatever we've done, but it's, it's always been an extension, final action to the final date, I tell you, we've done it. The one time we didn't, it, it...
I, I don't see a lot of, um...
So what's the date, on the new date for this?
Um, July thirteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I gave the board a snapshot as to where I was at with this argument, uh, at the last meeting. And we've also, kind of ad hoc, have discussed a lot of all of this already. So I think that in the interest of time, I'm going to try to just be brief. Corner lot, RV zoning district, front yard, rear yard, side yard. Average setback taken into consideration, six point four feet. Sorry, no worries. Average setback taken into consideration, six point four feet here, and counting thirty feet over here for good measure. Brings us to eighteen point two feet, which is the line shown on your plan. We have a situation where we have a deviation from the special permit with respect to the addition. That deviation with respect to the addition is covering the porch, the front dormer, the foundation under the porch, in lieu of the sunroof, and the roof. Well, the roof is over here, that's on this front, but that's not. With respect to the special permit, it goes to the other. When we, uh, received the permit to raise the house and reconstruct the house as a result of the foundation damage that we discovered, no portion of that is within the setback line of the front yard. And only about three percent is shown here in blue, and is shown in blue on the east elevation and the south elevation. Are the, those are the deviations within the non-conforming setback area from what existed to what is there. And so our special permit request concerns essentially just the roof height, because the porch, the foundation, the dormer, all meet the setback. In addition, we discussed this evening that we would throw into the special permit request the concrete pad. And so we're asking for the board to consider that in its special, in our special permit request. So essentially, that's our application. From a procedural perspective, there is a... there is a pending legal action in the land court. And that action, uh, we need to report where we are with the special permit process by the end of this calendar month, which I will do. It sounds like we initiated the process and it's going to be continued. So we've already answered the average grade issue. From our perspective, we think that it's a final decided issue pursuant to the special permit in two thousand and eighteen. And I don't see procedurally how we can go back on that. So, um... The average grade question was considered, discussed, decided upon in the special permit application in two thousand and eighteen. Showed on the plan, the fact that it was based on a two thousand and nine survey, field survey identified on the plan. That special permit became final. And the determination by this board with respect to average grade is done. It was made. And it became final. So that's my take on that. From a procedural perspective. What was that? We could say the same about the setback, except that the building inspector has made a determination on that.
It's nothing like a determination of the setback. You like to find your way of...
Yes. I don't see any dispute. This is the word building is used. If the dispute were determined to be that you can't use the average setback, then the answer is yes.
No. That average setback.
Yes, a portion will be placed in the setback. And if the board is going to go in that direction, I would ask the board to make specific findings as to how the bylaw will do that.
Your finding is that it's under eight seven feet? Not eight nine?
No, eight nine is as of right reconstruction. And since there was a deviation, then we're trying to recapture that deviation. That's how, that's how we get in at eight point seven A. Eight point seven A is the jurisdictional question and the as of right work that can be done if it's, if it needs setback.
Could you explain to me the, um, volume calculation? I just couldn't quite grasp it. It comes with the roof. Really, the only, um, additional volume, non-conforming volume, is the roof. Yep. Not, not the side or anything like that. Well, Ryan can talk to that.
Yeah, so basically, you know, we were just taking the volume area of this section right here with regards to... And then, you know, this is up, this is in the attic right here. So basically, taking the volume of this area, the entire area of, you know, basically, uh, the house from, you know, basically the second floor, right there. We took the entire area right here with regard to... And the area right here to come up with is three hundred and fifty feet.
So we looked at it three dimensionally?
Yeah, three dimensionally.
So it may, it may not be a roof element. It looks an average about four to five feet.
Well, it's a four. Yeah, it, it's just this, you know, sliver right here of area with regards to then, you know, basically the floor area right here too. So, you know, taking this floor area with that, that sliver right there, the area to come up with like that in relation to three hundred and fifty feet.
Because the vast majority of the roof, as it rises to the feet, meets the setback. So that's, that's why this statement is cut out.
Because again, too, I mean, this volume is already here. You know...
The yellow, the yellow is pre-existing.
Pre-existing.
The calculations were done after the building was torn down?
Yes.
The calculations that showed what the three different structures look like?
Yeah. We've had, uh, I think before the board in two thousand and eighteen, correction from the long line, there was probably some plan on, oh, the, or, I mean, the board had the original plan for the house in the two thousand and eighteen special permit right there. So you basically, those exact plans, you know, they are stamped, you know, is what was presented in the special permit is what's there. And we did, actually, and technically too, when we redid the, uh, foundation of the original house, it actually did get a little smaller, but...
If we were to do the, the alternative on the flat roof, we'd actually be reducing the amount of building that came from the setback there.
Then what was there originally?
The front, so...
Yeah, ideally.
Right, if you did consider views, I, I can, I, I know that Mr. Wyndham Counselor, I'm sure would have an opinion on what differences are made. It appears to me to need relatively the minimalist amount of the roof from that vantage point. With this vantage point here, we're only talking about the blue area. And I'm not even certain of that angle. It probably does look out, it probably does have an ocean behind it, but I'm not sure.
No, it doesn't, I think all the, all the wood, everything's basically going forward right there. That's actually, oh, you know, pretty much behind, you know, not behind, but I mean, it's, you know, it's out of their, you know, sight of, you know, sight, you know, line of sight.
But these, these are obviously not sometimes.
So, uh, just so I, hopefully, have it clear. Okay. In terms of the new construction, the stuff in gray might not be the same as what was there before, but because it's all within the setbacks, you have the right as long as you're conformant to zone to do whatever you want, right?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
The stuff in yellow...
Well, I was talking about the gray.
The, the, no, I was...
I, I got, I got, I got yellow, I got gray. Yeah. I'm saying the gray isn't what was there before, but because it's all within setbacks, you can do basically whatever you want as long as you're conformant to zone, right? It was permitted to... Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, no, I was just asking, it's probably...
Yeah.
And then the yellow is, is pre-existing non-conformity, which obviously you're allowed to do as long as it's not whatever works. And so the blue is the only, only part of the reconstruction that is not a pre-existing non-conformity or is something that you can do by right pursuant to the building.
I think that you accurately stated it. And I might add, the intention of the blue, we should correlate with the language of section eight point seven. So when you look, I'm sorry, eight point nine, with reconstruction as of right. When you look at section eight point nine, it says that if maybe we rebuild within the same portion of the lot, the exterior dimensions of any vertical section of which does not exceed that of the original building, so that's a vertical plane issue, and use as before, provided that such repair or reconstruction does not increase its non-conformity and is substantially contaminated in three years. So the, the blue area is intended to be that portion of the reconstructed building that does increase the non-conformity.
Yeah. Yep.
My question is, when, did you realize that that blue area is... It's already built? The thing you could do...
Well, I'll be completely honest. You know, we had two decisions saying that we had two side lot lines, but now we know that we have a rear lot line. And if that was a side lot line, that would all be conformant. So it wasn't until it was already built that Mr. Cobb now brought it to all of our attention that we have a rear lot line issue that I had no idea about, uh, because we had basically two special permits saying I have two sides and two fronts, and basically two building permits, you know, saying I have two sides and two fronts. And the building inspector that was adamant that I had two basically sides and two fronts. So I didn't know until the building was already built that I had to come up with a rear lot line. Yeah, in October, November, you know, yes. Yep. Yes.
Do you understand the...
Yeah.
Twenty percent setback for a side.
Yes.
And technically, the house is twenty-four feet, I think the closest part from, you know, like, from the rear lot line.
Uh, if, if we knew about this foundation issue... And, you know, Ryan wasn't represented by counsel when he came in to the board in two thousand and eighteen. Didn't catch the average setback issue. But we never would have done it this way. We would have, we would have come to the board at the time for what we wanted to build. No one does it this way. There were real-time conversations happening with Bob. Bob said, "Go ahead and take the building down. I'll issue you the building permit. You can start the construction. You can start the work on that." He didn't just do it. Um, it was discussed because there were things happening on the site, people there, and he understood it needed to come down, so...
Well, it's dangerous. I mean, basically, he saw it too. He saw the foundation, and he's like, this is unsafe. He can't, you know, basically rebuild on it.
It's un, it's unfortunate that it happened this way, but it wasn't by design.
You know, I just, just, in both, like, the building is built with excess of height and style and the purpose, which is to leave it in time within setback. Now, wouldn't you just expect you already where it's supposed to be? Now, by purpose, yes, it's a...
Thanks, Nick. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, what's, what's, what's the...
Um, it was referenced in that decision, however, from, I, I'm sort of, I'm not prepared tonight. It's a whole, I need to, I need to... I believe it's beside. We have a two point one, one reference. Then our provision is five point three. And that five point three, and then five point three, then our provision.
I think I'm very sorry about that.
All right.
I think there are just so certain things that we've covered a lot. I'm going to try, try to kind of go where people might not think of myself, but I am going to go over that. The basics, because we were kind of jumping all over the place a little bit in the building permit deal, on building deal, permit issues, um, from which areas are a lot of the things we did. Give it a sense of confusion, but I'm going to, to just keep a point again and save a late here, um, special permit process. So as you all know, Mr. Sacco's, um, special permit application comes after many months of delay. Um, after the board determines back in December that he may apply for a special permit, we're looking at a house that we had already built. Um, when I got involved in this matter, there was nothing on the ground. I submitted some pictures to you in the last year, which I'd like to make part of the second as well, showing that the ground had... showing that the ground had nothing on it as of a year ago and agreed with being worked upon. Consistent with the prior actions of this, this matter and the applicant, the special permit application is very misleading. It's very confusing. It has many accuracies, and it has some critical gaps in information, many of which we referenced in the last hearing.
It's for safety of this family, I think.
I'm going to, thank you, sir. In a situation like this one, without adequate data, it's impossible to determine exactly what the impact would be on the windmill. And it's my position that even with the information that we have, you can still show that there's a substantial detrimental impact on the windmill. However, you really can't get there. There's too much data that, that raises questions. There, there's, there's a lack of data, there's some confusion. There's confusion that I'm gonna point out about what, what they've actually done, that they weren't permitted to do and what they're actually asking for here today. Um, and so I think we really have to go back to the basics here. And I think frankly, I think as an ally of the special permit application, it's just based on the fact that we just don't have all the information. We don't have all the information we need to be able to adequately evaluate this impact. So I have, so I think you all probably know by now, I like to show pictures on Zoom, because I think, I'm a lawyer, I'm not an engineer. And for me, um, obviously, Mr. Kavanagh, who is here, he understands the engineering aspects, um, from an engineering perspective, but a picture in my mind really tells, is worth a million words. And I think in this case in particular, we can look at the data, we can look at the numbers, we can look at the height, we can look at the grades, but I think really seeing what was there before, what was in this location before and what's there now, um, is very impactful. And so in that regard, I'd like to show you some pictures. Um.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Yeah, sure.
What's the difference between, those, uh, really isn't all that relevant to what you, uh, tried to do.
Understood.
What we can tell is what, within our jurisdiction, is impact, but
I know.
And they found this kind of thing in the statement saying that there's a little portion of the roof is non-conforming.
Correct. Correct.
If you disagree with that, we need to know what you disagree with.
Correct. So let me skip the pictures for now. I, I'm gonna show you a couple of pictures that relate to specific areas in play. But let me skip the broad, broad pictures. So, um, the first, first area I'm gonna address, and again, we addressed this in Mr. Kavanagh, or addressed this in the last hearing, is the average grade. Um, so I think, and again, this relates to your question of whether what they have in blue is the only thing that should be in blue. Because frankly, if the average grade is measured incorrectly, um, if the average grade is inaccurate, then we're not able to effectively evaluate or accurately evaluate the impact, the vertical impact. Um, so from our perspective, the plans that were submitted, impossible to understand the numbers and the calculation. And the two critical questions that we referred to earlier, um, that really need to be answered are, number one, when did they determine the average grade? It's our position that the average grade should not be determined based on two thousand and nine. I showed you some pictures earlier that show that the grade has changed at the house. And, but we're entitled to, we're all entitled to understand what the grade actually is now. Um, without that, it's very difficult to understand the vertical impact. Um, and I would say, to the extent that, um, the applicant argues, no, no, it's two thousand and nine's average number, he's now, today, added to his special permit request, this bump out in the back of the property. Um, and I guess I have a couple, couple notations on that. Um, my first is, and I apologize, I'm just gonna, if you guys are comfortable with it, I'm just gonna circulate one copy of the picture, so I don't have to dig through and waste everybody's time, um, digging through. Um. Fair enough, but the plans that they submitted in the note refer to the two thousand and nine
It's two thousand and nine.
So actually, let me take you to that, then, that's important. I think that's an important point. Um, and I apologize if I have two points. Um, okay, so if you look at, and then I apologize if I don't have copies, because for sharing, I'll be good. This is a document that was submitted by the applicant, which is a certified plot plan. They submitted an updated one, it would be about the June first, um, with a few revisions. Um, so this was, this was, um, actually, let me just show you what it looks like.
This one?
This one, this is like
This is the June first, twenty twenty one? Yeah, I think we all, that's what I have.
Yeah. Correct. So if you look at, um, the abstract, the top left, averaged, it says, average grade around dwelling per January nine, two thousand and nine field survey. So it refers specifically to the January nine, two thousand and nine. And then it says, if you look down in the bottom left, it refers to note, note five, specifies contour and spot grade elevation shown here on are the results from an in-ground of an on-the-ground survey performed by Merrill, so to think, on January nine, two thousand and nine. Um, and then it says, elevation data was captured prior to the newly constructed garage in the subject property and may not reflect current existing conditions in some areas. Um, and so it's, by virtue of the specific language on the plan, says their calculated odds of two thou, oh, thank you, as of two thousand and nine. Um, so, so again, two thousand and nine, two thousand and eighteen isn't the proper date either, because the grade has been, um, infringed upon since that time. And I would also note that if, we're now seeking to add, or the applicant's now seeking to add this back bump out as part of the special permit application. Um, and so on that basis alone, the grading, um, should be redone as of today. Um, I just wanna, I apologize for just passing on one copy of pictures, but I just wanna, I think this is a really important point, that the bump out, the applicant attorney advocacy indicated that the bump out was, or, I believe, was just out because he thought it was there before he purchased the house. Uh, and I just wanna circulate, pick up two pictures. One was a picture that we included, not me, another attorney representing the windmill back in two thousand and thirteen when they were opposing, um, construction. And this is a picture of the house, I believe, at that time. This is as of two thousand and thirteen, Mr. Sacco lived in it. And then a picture of, in the last week or two, that shows this back bump out, and you can see,
Can you pick some parts?
Oh, so the southeast concrete pad, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, I want to ask you a question.
Sure.
Um, with the average grade, um, I, I'd asked a question earlier. Is it your contention that what they're doing, they, they, they dug out, removed theirs, lowered the grades, then they built the, the house? And are you saying essentially they're kind of then measuring their thirty-five feet from the two thousand and nine, which was higher? So if you actually go to what the average grade is today, they're exceeding the thirty-five cent, thirty-five feet? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. I just don't know without an accurate average, but I think
Tell me, though, because my lawsuit, if the grade is, maybe it's kind of like, think it's something different. Do you hear what I'm saying?
Well, we're trying to understand, when does the clock start? How far back do you go? And when do, when does it begin?
Well, this, they'll contend that the clock started with, with, uh, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
But we're at a hearing tonight in twenty twenty-one, where we're looking, they're looking for relief for a foundation in the back of the building.
You're talking grade?
Well, we're talking about a special permit to figure out height.
Can you tell me how that, that relates to height?
What is, what is the, what is everything being measured to? What is the grade? So in other words, I can go back twenty years and have a construction project that just goes on and manipulate the grades and, and ask for more relief throughout that process? And
Well, as David said, the last time we looked at the board, that's pretty much the grade, I mean, I'll say seventy feet to one of its five, I guess. And I'd say we'd point to that, that was, yeah, it was not. So that's, that was pretty much the grade, or part of the board, new, or whatever they are at that time.
Challenge, or the other issue here, with respect to reconstruction grade, is between the time of the two thousand and eighteen hearing and the time of the June building plan application. That something had substantial change in its property, i.e. had decided to knock down the whole plant property, knock down the whole entire construction, and reconstruct. And so that was sort of a new, it was, it was essentially a new project. If you look at the pictures I circulated with earlier, not the one, not those, but the ones showing the, um, level, the, the grade, you can actually see that, that concrete pad in that, um, which was, is the south corner of the house. And so the grade is being worked on in that regard, and that was separate and apart from the two thousand and eighteen special permit.
All right, and it was just focused, we were talking grade.
We were talking grade.
So what does that have to do with grade? What does the path exist to the thickness of, who is it?
Well, well, I guess, doesn't specifically have to do with grade, it's just an accuracy. It has to do with grade today, right now, because they've added it to their special permit application, as of today. And so to the extent you disagree that we should look at the grade after the, if we should, to be fit and take the position that we shouldn't be looking at the grade as of, it started this past year ago, we now wanna get a special permit for this concrete pad. Um, and so that would, would in effect, um, require a determination of what grade.
I understand your argument about if maybe the grade is, uh, species, but I, I see no relevancy for the path. None of you are the path, as a separate document.
That's correct. That's correct. And part of my racing, racing, that's
So you're, so you're not kind of here and there and all, and if, if you've got a concern about grade, you'll, right?
I think it sort of ties to the actual evolution of this project. It, it, when does it, where do we start? And at what point does the clock restart, I guess? When the project changes so substantially, we start off at the deck here, nothing back here.
The project may have changed, but the, the wording in the bylaws talks about reconstruction, you're in height.
They're assuming that you're, yeah, assuming that you're applying for a permit to build something. It's before you start the actual construction. In this case, they started something, they got approval for something, changed gears, built something completely different. And, and the, and the manipulation of the property is such that it affects the overall size of the structure.
You still measure it at some certain point, and the
That's that certain, that certain point is changing, it's constantly changing.
We don't care about how it's changed, that's post-construction, pre-construction grade. I mean, there's no way that you can follow a project as you were before.
Right.
Same, you know, whatever, phase combination, that's why you have to get a plan, and we have to do it.
Well, that, that's another question that we raised earlier, about how is that average grade being determined? We don't know. It talks about, um, you know, spot grades, it doesn't show the number of spot grades, it doesn't, it says it takes spot grades and divides by the number of grades. I, I don't know what that means. Did they take a grade here, and at a higher elevation, and divide by two? And that's the average grade? When we know that's not the case, so.
What grade was presented to us in twenty eighteen?
Forty. Elevation forty. The mean grade. And so
It started at elevation forty.
For comparison's sake. This garage is at about elevation twenty-nine to thirty, and this garage is at elevation thirty-four to thirty-five. But that, that's, it, it comes up, but there's so much undulation around the property, it's hard to tell.
At least that we should not, um, give any, any feedbacks to the average grade, but of course, when
It's unclear, based on the evidence that's been provided.
You accepted that.
And you accepted other things that have since been proved to be
All right.
Don't wait for you to tell us how that twenty eighteen average grade was wrong. I, I don't know how it was correct, in that, that we don't even know what they used, according to sound use.
I guess, to tell you, when the, when the plans are written together, and you're I don't know what else, what we can do other than, you know, I just can't, I mean, if somebody tells you that, at the time.
Well, we're, we're here now. I mean, that's, that's, I can't speak for what happened back then, but here in the special permit proceeding in twenty twenty-one. That's my point. They measure
Well, because it doesn't always, if, if you're starting at elevation forty, it's like the, um, twenty eighteen down set.
In directions, I think they measure about twenty-seven and a half feet, to the midpoint, not to the door, to the midpoint.
So even if they change the grade by four, five feet, it's still
It, it all ties into where the front yard setback is, how much of this is within the special permit? What is the substantial detriment? We can't, there's, it's such a moving target, we don't know any of this for certain. And we're, we're dealing with a series of plans that date back to two thousand and nine, and several iterations since then. Setbacks have changed, um, the building height has changed, it was a certain height, now it's higher. It's, as Joe mentioned earlier, or actually
I think the whole thing is, is unfolding now. And the way it's unfolded, it's just been, I'm sure mind-boggling, because all this stuff is happening, it's nothing like what they expected to happen. But we, we've done a great, we've introduced six, you know, no matter how we feel about something, we have a bylaw that says if you do this, you can do that. And if, even if they change the grade by four feet, this building is still going to be the highest height. So even, for us to go through a whole process of, of building, what the grade ought to be, it's still can, it's gonna be kind of moot point, because it's still gonna be
Well, it's, it's, it is, but it's gonna be substantially different within the setback, in fact.
Certainly, which is, absolutely, things are like, going up. I understand that, that's, that's
It's right.
I don't want to get really bogged down with the grading, it's not taking any significant difference in the overall.
And, and I wish I could say it, you know, or, but
No, it, it can't, that actually, you've got, make, that make an argument, but I
Well, we can't get on the property, we sort of have the property. I would think it's the burden of the applicant to submit a special permit from twenty twenty-one, like, information that's newer than two thousand and nine. So, um,
No, 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 I apologize. So I, I mean, I agree, I don't wanna be like that, of course, but I agree with that. I think the reconstruction grade needs to be done as of, the house, if you don't even know the house, the thing just went backwards here, the house shouldn't be there yet. So I think we should think about that, too, the house shouldn't be there.
What could you have us do?
I would have you, um, have one, to the end, existing conditions plan, a proposed conditions plan, conditions plan, determine, get us so there to determine the average, what the average grade is now, and let's get the actual numbers. And, and maybe there won't be a height issue, but maybe there will.
Why would we want the average grade now when our bylaw says no? Our bylaw says it's pre-construction. We would be, we would be ignoring, uh, all of the, the, the words in the bylaw.
We're, we're still on the construction there, number one. We have proposed retaining walls in the front yard that actually go into the public right of way. We have a plan that has no proposed grading. It has existing grading from two thousand and nine. We have no idea what's going on in the front, based on the site plan that was submitted last week. We have retaining walls, these are all within the public right of way. These, this is a proposed retaining wall showing grades from two thousand and nine. There's a spot elevation here that says thirty-four point one seven. This contour is thirty-eight. So it's, it's just, we have no idea how to even gauge the accuracy of this stuff. And I, I completely sympathize with you, that you have a stamped plan back when these permits were issued, but it had all these qualifying But it had all these qualifying notes on it. And even this note, contour and spot grade elevation shown here on are the results of an on-the-ground survey performed by metal associates on January ninth, two thousand nine. The elevation data was captured prior to the newly constructed garage of the subject property, this garage. And may not reflect current existing condition in some areas. So this was done way before, this has been several iterations of permits for this property, but they've just kind of carried on this old information as they submit new information. Of course, it's, it's pre-existing, but it's, it, so that's the.
And I, I just wanna finalize, round this out. So if there's nothing bad, this is another document submitted, part of a plan, submitted in part of the application, it's the foundation plan. Um, it's seventeen and seven, I still, um, dated November eighth, two thousand nineteen. Latest revision, you wanna include the, the. Oh, that's what, I'm sorry. So I just wanna direct your attention, have my grades, I wanna put this all, um, in the record. Um, uh, you know, four and five, four says contractor to verify existing grades. Prior to construction, determine final wall and slab elevation, consult with professional engineer. And then five says contractor to maintain grade is existing prior to construction. So I would just, I would state that, that's further, the grade was, was clearly, um, you know, messed, it was clearly, I'm, I'm missing the word, it was clearly, thank you, that's a better word, it was clearly altered. Um, and I would, this is support for the fact it shouldn't have been altered. It doesn't make any sense for, uh, an applicant to get a special permit and then to go alter the grade to allow them to build a higher structure. It, it's totally, it's illogical, I think it does defy the intent of the bylaws. Uh, that's not how the bylaws were intended to operate. Um, and I think it's really important because otherwise people are gonna be incentivized to go start, um, intruding upon, you know, digging it on the grade, change the grade so that they can get a couple, whether a couple extra ranges, a couple extra feet, one add this, one add that, after the board has, once it becomes beyond pre-construction. So I think this is, I think this is actually a really big issue. I, I, I think it's really problematic that, um, the grade should be able, should be, should be permitted to be altered. Um, and especially in a situation like this when it took years after, nearly years after that special permit was issued, um, for construction, you can start in a private construction still markedly. Um, so I, I just wanted to direct your attention, that's very important.
And last, just to close this up, this was reapproved twenty eighteen. So this is what you were looking at for an extension. This, the house was here, you have an existing pre-con, non-comforming structure, but it was all within the setback. But this is really what your focus was. It was in line, you weren't changing the grade here, there was no change whatsoever. Back, there's nice extension railings here. This is now all full foundation with a, a subgr, uh, subgrade structure. But the height is all taller within what they thought was the front yard. It wasn't just, gee, we thought that was the side yard, now it's a rear yard. It, the whole thing was in the front yard. So that was always known. So it, it's just, it's not one thing, it's a lot of things that just add up in the sum of the, the parts. Substantial. To, to touch on, if I had.
Would that, plan there is on the, over the two thousand nine grades here? It changes that the name of the grades. Does that make, does that change where the top of the houses?
No.
Anything on the drawing yet?
It would just change the.
Changes was below.
It would, it would bring this down. And that's what we can't determine, what is the substantial impact for the neighborhood with respect? Because we're told that the volume and the facade are very minimal, but we don't know back then until we have more. Data. As far as the, the front yard setback, you own interest.
You can, you can.
The front yard setback is important, um, for a number of reasons. The, the note three specifically refers to, and it just excludes highway doings and wide industry, but it covers the rest of the town as far as distance is concerned. But it specifically says dwellings or other main buildings. For dwellings for the residential district presumably, other main buildings for other districts in town that don't have. Conformity, village, technology, business, and stuff like that. The definition of a.
What if you have a resident property that had a big barn in the front, in the house, that that? Is it a barn or a main building?
I would consider that a main building, sure. It, it's habitable, um, presumably. I would, I would call it a main building. But to, to go from saying, oh, there's no definition to dwelling, and go right to the building definition. Buildings are defined as tents, vehicles located on private property. That's, that's a building in cohesive under the bylaw. So all we gotta measure to park the cars in the front yard, uh, that, that's the slippery slope. But I, I think measuring to things that aren't the dwelling or the main building, portions of these main buildings, and then to convert that portion to a full built structure by right. That's what you're doing. And you can see the notion of dwelling versus dwelling or other main building. That's just, that, that's the point.
That's the process, it supports part of the goal. Outside world.
Or dwelling. It, it's unenclosed, uninhabitable, you know, unheeded space. What you wanna measure should convert that into a by right. Potential thing.
The next, um, item I wanna address, um, that I think it's, it's, it's very strict. The, which we talked about, that shaded portion of the grade. It was raised an additional two, two point five feet. It's within the rear setback. Um, and there is no ambiguity, um, that, that was changed without permission. Um, and it's all position that, um, raising with a group by that two and a half feet-ish. Um, within the, the, the setback, it's substantially more detrimental to the windows. Um, you know, it's between the air, the light, the feeling of plushness, the odour, um, that fitting the building that goes to the, um, setback. It, it, it's clearly substantially more detrimental to all. Um, I was next gonna discuss the average mean setback. I think, I think John, um, addressed that, but just to reiterate, um, it's our position that the board should be measuring from the dwelling, not from the porch. And that would change the eight point two calculation that has been presented, um, by the applicant. And as a result, more of the structure would be within, um, the front setback. We talked about that foundation in the rear, so I'm gonna move on from that. It's our position, last, it should probably be, it's now apparently part of this application, that, um, that foundation in the rear, I know I addressed it earlier and I was jumping around a little bit, my apologies, but that, that wasn't there from Mr. Sasso about the house, but it's there at some point in time. Um, it's our position that it's substantially more detrimental, it expands that portion of the house. And frankly, it sets up the situation in such a way that in six months, a year, Mr. Sasso will come to you and wanna do something with that, you know, let a little time pass and then he'll come and do something with that, that portion, um, within the setback. And it's just simply not, not, it, it was never allowed. It, it was built there without permission yet again. Um, and the request for a special permit to keep it there should be denied. Um. I just know, um, this is something we haven't yet talked about, um. Or if you look at, um, plans submitted by the applicant.
So on the applicant's, um, submitted, um, sheet, on the axium plans, sheet A six. Yeah. I'm sorry, sheet, yeah, sheet A five, I, my apologies, sheet A five. A five. The front porch, this is on the right side of that page, the front porch, where the lower garage connects to the southeast corner of the dwelling. It's shown as open on both ends, but it's actually enclosed. Is that part of this relief? It's shown open in those two views. But, but that is currently enclosed. But that didn't seem like it, it.
Anywhere the pillars are?
Yes.
I'm gonna circulate a picture, just showing you what.
This is dated November twenty nineteen. Right, July twenty twenty.
This is just a photograph that you can see that. It wasn't previously there.
And this is a degree, I think.
Correct.
You would argue that adding a non-portal compensates that.
Well, it didn't seem like it was part of their, it's on their plans, uh, in those two views, it's not clear.
And it's not, it's not marked up in blue either, it's just another area.
No, they, I mean, with. Should be.
Correct, it should be. Um, it wasn't there before, it's there now, um. Next, and, uh, Mr. Cavanaro highlighted that, um, a few minutes ago, about the proposed new driveway, which I don't know if it's.
It's, it's on the site plan, it's.
So the proposed new driveway is on the site plan, um, and, um, we have a number of issues that I'll let you finish on.
Yeah, we, we just, it's a picture. Straight out of the view and we start to tell where actually that.
It's in the corner.
Let me see if I can.
It's out behind the, the light of the pillars or even within the.
There's, you can see the, in the picture on the circulate. Here's another deep thing about it, is the benefit of having.
Yeah, certainly your plans need to be updated. Can you, can you just tell?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, let me, I'll give you a copy.
I made you. So are you talking about the white?
Yeah, the white.
That's always been there. It's not on the plan. Yeah, it is. Yeah. You, you get, see, the windows are a little different right there, it's not just a straight window, but that's a window right there, it's always been there, it's.
I mean, yeah, there's a picture of the original structure.
I don't see it showing on A five. I see columns in there.
We're just comparing it to A, A five, right?
Well, A, A five, you can't, you can't really see it right there, you have to look at A, uh, A four. You look at A four. This area right here, you have the top, right? Yeah, that's always been there. I just, I just did, I did a window design of having, you know, the smaller window, but, you know, it's. It was a glass handle before, you know, but I did a different window. Well, I, I propose that we listen to the, uh.
So is our position that that's traditional non-comformity that could be, and do we want the plan and should be part of the, it's not a previously committed.
I, I, I'm sorry, so could you repeat, please, what, what's the additional non-comformity?
The, um, the porch, the closed porch with the window on the, with the baby mask side with the.
So this part of A four, right there?
Correct, and they found back to the very well. That's correct. I think I, I don't think I addressed the, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I think I started and then we got. Correct, and maybe in modified, I mean, maybe in the. So I'm nearing the end, I am nearing the end, a couple, a couple more points to the driveway, which I just mentioned a bit, um, which John had pointed out on the other plan, um, it appears that they're on their plan, they're working within the public way, um, which even requires more than approval, which we're not aware of. Um, in that area, there's clearly a lowering of the grade, um, and we addressed the fact that it's based on the two thousand nine. Um, there's also the tining wall on Linden Street, which is gonna destroy a matter of post-retaining wall within the public way, um, that, that supposed rate in two thousand nine.
No, it's a.
Say it again?
No, it's a. But it's an enclosed, any room?
Correct. Exactly. So you can read this.
No, I just wanna quickly just go over that. Pad and the foundation, what we call the pad, it's really the foundation in that background. I know it was kind of thrown in as a special permit add-on this evening, but it's a substantial structure that clearly, based on the evidence that was submitted tonight, it did not exist when this all started. It was not as part of these plans, this is what was there. They have, the good thing about having so many plans and dating back so far is that we can go back and actually figure out what was here back then. And this is, this is essentially what was there. There was a series of steps that came down, but it's consistent with the photograph that we have. It was not a full foundation. It's actually, it looks like it was built in stages. It's like they have several path, a few pads on top of one another. Then they have an actual foundation of reinforcement that was decided to build a wall, which was part of their earlier application when they thought it was in the side yard. So to just kind of throw that in as a special permit request, that's a little cavalier, um, with respect to the impact.
Right, right. It's there, and that's a starting point where the next step, which is given, that is true. It's very, it's extremely concerning for the window, I mean, that portion. And originally, you'll recall that, um, Mr. Sasso had actually built that. And originally, you'll recall that, um, the success would actually built that out before he took it down, before he realized that there was an issue with the setback. But that's a very, even though it might appear to not, or maybe it's presented as not that big of a deal, it's an extremely big deal for them down there. Um, but that's there, shouldn't be there at all, um, regardless of whether or not they can go on or is that a, it's there and why is it there? In their fault. Without approval, as you said. Um, so I'm just gonna wrap it up, um, so just to conclude, um, as I've mentioned today in the prior hearings, there's been an ongoing pattern of misleading information. And inaccurate calculations that essentially speaks everyone deathly, and I know that in the applicant's presentation, they gave a number of reasons or excuses and, um, you know, relied on Mr. Egan's information here and there. But the reality is these structures were built, um, in a non-compliant manner, um, without approval and, um, you know. Where it's clear that it's not open application required, and again, when I came to this board a year ago, um, on Zoom, there was nothing on, I should say, when I filed my first appeals and enforcement, there was nothing on the ground at that time. And now here we are, with this very large housing project from before, some of which is uncommitted. Uh, there's, as I mentioned earlier, and John mentioned, there's a lot of information and data that we believe is lacking in order for this board to accurately assess. Whether or not and what the impact is, and whether there's a substantial detrimental impact in many areas. It's always in there, is a substantial detrimental impact, but it's unclear as to the extent of it without having the data, and I've mentioned that the average grade issue, we've been through that, we've been through that, average mean setback, um, there's much data that is lacking. Um, and I, and I also wanna say, and I've mentioned this also before, that, um, it's very, the bylaws, as you all know, are very important, and I think setting a precedent, um. Setting a precedent here, um, is something that we saw really, not as evident in the results. Um, the manner in which this project has proceeded, and I know there's been also some reasons and excuses for why it has, but it's just not the manner in which the bylaws and procedures were there to help. And in making your decision here, uh, we just take that into consideration, um, for somebody to come in and ignore the bylaws to the procedures they wished. Um, it wasn't until you all, um, as part of your decision in January, um, required, if you see the sister, it accepted Mr. Howland, who took it out from the beginning, which is the sister regarding our control portion. That Mr. Sastho finally stopped doing most of what he wasn't supposed to be doing, but it took, it took quite a long time, and at that point, I'm going to do the whole thing with already there. Um, so it's our position that the, the special permit should be denied, um, in the alternative, there's certainly much information that, um, as I mentioned a moment ago. That would be very important in making a determination as to whether, whether it presents, uh, the impacts, um, both in terms of the vertical impact and in terms of like thirty three year old setback, um, that's accurate. Um, and so I would ask the board to reconsider all of this, that's what I've been involved, um, and deny the special permit.
Okay, what? Do I have other, is the panel in the audience?
Um, so.
And we have something.
You know, I'm, I'm asking, like, keeping it brief, I'm just. Just a couple of quick points on this, um. First argument that we need accurate information or that it's impossible to determine the impact. I think it's, information is right in front of you, in most circumstances, uh, you don't have a building, um, to go by, but here we do. And we know what portion of it is pre-existing non-conform, or, uh, is pre-existing non-conforming? And where the impact is, which is the blue part, so the blue part is, is the impact, whether the average grade is here, there, or anywhere else. Also, I think that it's instructive to note that the peak of this roof line over here matches the peak of the roof line on the other, on the structure. Which was pre-existing in height, so even if, even if there's a height issue that is presented because of the average grade discrepancy. It's irrelevant for purposes of this conversation because we certainly don't need a variance, so it would just be a special permit, which is what we're talking about here. The. Front yard site details. The Windens have to demonstrate how they're agreed when they get to this level, um, when they, when they, when they're here. And, and, and I don't even think that they use Linden Drive, so I'm not sure how any feature in the front yard along Linden Drive is gonna affect them whatsoever, let alone substantially. Um, as far as this smoke and mirrors on the average grade, the average grade certainly gets altered when construction begins, that's what happens. And we're talking about pre-construction, so I don't think it's any surprise that the grade has changed as this construction commenced. Um. On the average setback, I think, David, you asked the question, but it's elementary, it's one oh one, we do this every day in zoning, it's the first question that we ask is. Where do, you know, do we measure front, do we measure setbacks from a closed porch or don't we? And that's because a closed porch is attached to a building that is a dwelling, it's all a dwelling, we don't separate out a permit for a porch and a permit for a dwelling if it's attached, one dwelling. Um, that precedence has been followed and established in personal circumstances that I'm aware of with Cavanaro Consulting, where I've been on John's team. And I see no reason to deviate from it whatsoever. I think that is all I have to say.
David asked a couple of things.
I did, I just wanna go home. Yeah. It's irrelevant whether it's concrete pad or not, a patio can be made of gravel.
The non-constraining structure for which it's been a special plan, because this is where we located it.
Yeah.
Generally, if you're, these are the ones, this structure can make.
So I, I am curious about this, is the height, is there a height requirement when we need to get permits for structures, do they have to be over a certain height? Three feet, okay, all right, so, um. So this is the recently constructed retaining wall on Mr. Wyndham's property, right? I, I know it's not, but I, I, what's before you, this is their pointing out, Mr., Mr. Sastho's credibility and throwing him over the coals, I think that that's important. Okay, right.
Retaining wall or solid, they do at any, at any point?
No, it's not, and, and, and again, too, what, you know, with regards to, to this proposed right here, is that this was all original retaining wall? And I was just putting back the old retaining wall, just having a cutout for the driveway so I could have access to the property. Because my other technical alternative is that if I can't do something like this, then I'd be looking at basically like corner of the property comes into the street and going into the corner of Linden and Jerusalem and blasting out and having to have access up this way, so. To be less detrimental, what I was thinking of is just replacing the, the retaining wall that was there, just having a cutout to have access to be able to get up to cut the lawn and maintain it and everything else too, because. The only access I'm gonna have, I, I need to have access to be up to the front office. Okay. Yeah, I agree with that, so, but are you saying that the wall doesn't need to be? No, it's not gonna be above three feet. Yeah, no, and, and, and the old retaining wall is four, it's, it's, you know, maintaining level and it's, it's, you know, just four or five feet, so we're not going above three feet retaining wall at any point, you know, with regards to within the setback. But I agree with you, if we are, we need to amend the application.
We don't wanna have some.
I agree. Well, I don't wanna come back either, no, I mean, it, it's been pointed out that, you know, Mr. Howland, Mr. Howland has pointed out to me with regards to the retaining wall that it cannot be above three feet. And, you know, I wasn't aware of that until he pointed out that, you know, if it's within the setback, you know, whether it be, you know, it cannot be above. Thank you very much, so you guys are gonna.
Make a motion to be able to, as well, and build on that. Move to second with all the favor.
Thank you, thank you.
Awesome, Jeff, I'm gonna send this, um, I'm gonna send you some emails from one of the.
I know you have your warrant.
Okay.
Not that we don't, when you.
Yeah, but that, that's, you're trying to grab that, so, so we don't. You know, the, the, meanwhile, I'm not allowed to talk to Matt about this, he can override it so much, and, uh, what?
No, you, well, you can send, um, what are you writing?
I am, I'll, I'll pick it up in that second.
So you're writing, you're writing, you're writing both? No, no, you say you're gonna raise a case, so you're drafting a case of permits and a material.
Yeah, I'll do one or the other, I can do both if you're necessary.
So what would happen is we're just sending to me and then I have a pretty of them, and you have to make notes, that's in public, you can get them in advance, and there's no paper in there. That's with you anyway, no, you cannot, you cannot talk about the content of this, of this decision offline.
Yeah, I'm two.
You got a three of the crime.
No, well.
No, when I'm listening, I'm like, I think.
Well, I'd be more than happy to, you know, how better, I mean, I'm just. Deal with so much of the greatness. You know, you have to confirm, tell me another, I didn't know to accept that. Who am I to disagree?
See, there is something that I will get, um, Jeff had asked me and it didn't come up, I don't know, but I will get some, my, my, my retaining walls and three minute setback and curve cuts, because I did, um, it is. And so let me get some more details, and I told, I, Jeff asked me today, and I said I was on topic, um, so I'm okay, because I think that's an important.
Some of the, I didn't ask, some of the retaining wall on town five.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of the, uh, some of the structure is on town five.
So.
You can only deal with.
But, um. Yeah, and so I just made the way it's perfect, which is what we're gonna do, so, um, it's, right, it's, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I believe that they have to get involved.
Yeah, and you know, John has, has.
I know that he's. Yeah, yeah, but I don't know for what.
I think we need something in writing, because this is something that I don't.
So yeah, I have to, yeah, because then they're gonna write, yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm. I said, I'll talk to John.
And we have something.
Yeah.
We have was, uh, we have.
We got something, um, we got some, we got something on the board, um, so we got something people have planned for, but they said it wasn't for the, for any board, because we have a meeting tomorrow night on that, so let me find out if it is relevant to you, I think this would be a set plan, but it's, 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 it's an operation for a question, just like that. And I haven't heard what they have to say, and I've been just sitting around. Um, the other issue in this public, I mean, it's, it's looking at, in the possibly office, building by rights, it could be. If you could build back by rights, but not necessarily the apartment.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's looking into all. Right, so he's just, so he's. Parking unit.
Yeah, I mean, really, it's a mixed basis, I think, with the bylaws, they can all.
Right, but he needs to just establish that it was on, it's, it's in the city, right now, they're gonna have a. But that's.
I, I wrote down the board that I discussed with, uh, Bobby Martin, who's a health chair, and so we, uh, and these checks were, uh, they're taking with my records, they have no record of, uh, ever mentioning my life, they have a base, they have nothing. We all saw, and we're familiar with, such as, we have no record of, uh, this, this, this. So, yeah, I believe.
I talked to the. I talked to the doctor and he has record of it being a private, he has a second.
I went to back ninety nine, you know, no record of whoever, it's not that.
Right, but I think, but I think it's, I think it was, we're going to be, but I think it was, but I think it was, it was in a.
Oh, it seemed to be in a abandoned, because I guess when the building's going down, the guys, and look there, they came running out. It was uncommitted. Use, yeah. You can't, can't part of your use. But, but it was quite good, it's my grandfather. If they're asking their father. Well, we sketch the limitations, it's quite good. On a formality, yes, tremendous, because I think we have to, uh, the other, yes. You can be grandfathered, you have to be. And it's a mixed piece of it. Yeah, but it's living, we'll, we'll have to see. It's a residential zone. Yeah. But residences, what they do. Who is the grandfather that makes this? Do you know, one of the pieces of this? But you can't parent father the residential. You can't parent father the. You can't grandfather the noncomplacency because they got variance in the school. And, and, and the variance, they have done the right, uh, X, Y, but not really.
But what you're saying is the garage, it's noncompliant and I, of the residential, it's a lot.
Oh, yeah, the iron.
Yeah, yeah.
He's not grandfathered, it's a residential, yes. Well, if you had to have the variance, you couldn't, uh, that on anyone. I don't think they've ever claimed, uh, uh, system rights. There are a lot of, I believe, of the variance taking the right. Yeah, they still have. So I would make them, anyway. So I assess with what they, whether I have.
I mean, okay.
John, John's also got, uh.
Right. Um, I don't, I don't know what happened with him, I don't know when it was, it could have been, it could have gone back.
They know it wasn't abandoned.
Right. I, I thought it, it could be in the, in the.
Oh, it could have been, but that, that doesn't, then they started up, then we do use it.
Five? I don't know. It's got to be, it's a long time. And it's been, see those, I've seen them pulled, pulled by. Right, and might also only be a building pile and that is on fire and it depends on how long it goes to catch.